That brings us to your update. Dr. Swift?
I'm going to begin this evening with just a statement, trustees, regarding the domestic terror attack in Buffalo over the weekend. It was heartbreaking, of course, as we all witnessed again a racist domestic terror attack, this one in a predominantly black neighborhood in Buffalo on Saturday. We've said it before, but I believe it deserves to be stated again. These devastating long-term impacts of outright and systemic racism. Because of these, African-Americans in our community, in our schools, and across the country live, attend school, and go about their lives in fear. We know that the situation is unacceptable and things must change. In the Ann Arbor Public Schools, we stand up and speak out against all acts of bigotry and racism. We condemn every act of bigotry and racism. Former President Barack Obama said it this way. If we want our children to grow up in a nation that lives up to its highest ideals, we can and we must be better. In Ann Arbor, we must be better. Just want to share my deep gratitude to our school teams, trustees, as I've been out in schools this week and as I have heard the reports from my team members who are out in schools. Members of our school team across classrooms and across the district have been doing the important work to connect with and to support our students, staff, and community. I wanted to share this evening with his permission some direct words from Gerald Vasquez, Principal Vasquez's message that he sent to the Scarlet Community. He said this. "We are reaching out to you to share our deepest anguish and grief regarding the horrific racist domestic terror attack that occurred in Buffalo, New York. This morning, we spoke to our students and faculty, and we shared with them that as a community, it is important that we come together to address this tragedy and the impact it will have on ourselves and on those around us. As a school, the Scarlet Nation prides itself on being an inclusive and welcoming space for students of all cultures and backgrounds. We will work to discuss and address these social injustices with our students so that they are able to process these events with some adult guidance. As students have questions, there will be support provided. Additionally, throughout the day, it was brought to our attention that some students had been watching and sharing the livestream video of the attack. This video contains graphic images of the atrocities committed in Buffalo, and it should not really be viewed by adolescents. Viewing such traumatic footage could have emotional or psychological consequences. We ask that parents and those who care about our students, please find an opportunity to discuss recent events as well as what they may be exposed to on the internet. Monitoring your students' internet usage is increasingly important, especially after incidents of societal violence. It is our collective responsibility to rise up and be the best human beings we can be. As we say here at Scarlet, we must ensure that there is room at the table for everyone." The words that Principal Vasquez so beautifully shared on Monday represent the ongoing work of our teams at every school in the Ann Arbor Public Schools. I just want to share that these situations remind us of the importance of processing these events in support of our children and community, but also remind us of our need for our deep commitment to social justice work, both in our schools and our community and our country. But it also impresses on me the need for action steps with regard to moving forward in our work. And I appreciate, trustees, that we continue to have discussions and we are moving forward in our work. We want to create a district where hate will not arise or emerge and where our children will have every opportunity to learn to see and celebrate and realize that our diversity is our strength. We must hear the lived experience of our African-American and all marginalized students, colleagues, and families. We must work on ourselves and work together to see with new eyes. We have to work to root out the insidious and pervasive infection of racism. Together, we can and we must do better. We will raise our voices against horrific acts of racial injustice. We will willingly confront the significant work that begins within ourselves and our organizations. We will support each other in this ongoing process, and we will hold one another accountable to take action and deliver results. I commit to growing myself, not only as an ally and an accomplice, but as an abolitionist and co-conspirator in this effort toward change. I know that the trustees have the same commitment, and I felt that this evening was an appropriate time to share more of the work that's gone on this week and, of course, to raise our voice yet again in calling out what these acts really are. So we'll turn now to the superintendent's update. Our students, staff, and families are continuing learning together, and they are focused forward on a strong wrap-up of this 21-22 spring quarter. I can just feel the excitement across our classrooms and schools for all the spring end-of-year activities, trustees. No one is lonely. There is an event every night of the week. I was driving past a school this morning, no parking spaces for all the activities that are going on in and around our schools. Today, Wednesday, in the month of May, we have the opportunity to express our appreciation for AAPS Speech Pathologists. They are essential members of our Student Intervention and Support Services teams. The American Speech Hearing Association has designated May 18th as Speech Pathologist Day to coincide with the Better Hearing and Speech Month recognized each May. The focus of this day is to increase understanding of and normalize the treatment of speech and language issues that can improve the quality of daily communication in life for those experiencing challenges. Communication is critical to connecting with others and is the channel through which all other learning happens. Difficulties with speech and language development affect a child's ability to learn and socialize. So trustees, we're so delighted to join together with everyone in our district and our community in celebrating our Speech Pathologists for their role in empowering our students every day in achieving their personal, school, and life success. Trustees, this is hot off the press. I haven't even had a chance today to share it with you. It came in this morning. Our Project Lead the Way Distinguished School Recognition was announced earlier today, and in the Ann Arbor Public Schools, we are leading the way with 30 schools receiving the Distinguished School Honor. That is the highest number ever. And so I just want to give a congratulations to our Project Lead the Way Launch Programs at all 21 elementary schools who were designated today. And then point out that, if I do say so myself, Ann Arbor Public Schools represents 21 of the 23 elementary schools recognized in the state of Michigan. That is 91% of the schools recognized in Michigan are our own elementary schools. And it is also, by the way, 7% of the schools recognized nationally. So kudos to this team. Now, our middle schools and K8s, all seven, were recognized also. And those seven of nine, I'm sorry, those seven of nine middle schools, 78%, were those recognized, among those recognized in Michigan, and they represented 5% of the national number. I also want to give a big shout-out to Community and to Skyline High Schools. They represent two of the four high schools recognized in the state and two of 191 schools at the national level. I just want to give a big shout-out to Mr. Tom Pachara, Ms. Sarah Shemansky, and the entire AAPS Project Lead the Way team. Trustees, you remember, we implemented this program just a few years ago, and already this team and our students have just blown the top off with their performance and their distinguished achievements. Summer Learning, we spent the podcast on this last week. I'm sorry, we noted this in our Friday update last week, excuse me, and we're just wanting to remind folks that there are a few openings remaining in our summer learning programs, and they should go online on our A2schools.org website if they'd like to enroll. At the same time, registration remains open for summer enrichment camps. We did invest some time on Tuesday at the podcast, A2 Schools Podcast, to highlight all of the amazing summer activities. Trustees, it starts on the Monday after school is out and goes all the way through the Friday before school starts, and the topic areas are wide and deep. They also are offering classes for teens and tweens. I wish, I need to send a message to Trustee Lightfoot, who always wanted us to add more for teen learners, and that program is getting really well-developed. So we just invite folks to go on at RECKNED at their website and enroll if you've not done so. I do want to point out that there is significant scholarship opportunity there, so we don't want folks to hold back if they're in need of support. We do have in our RECKNED program a lot of opportunity for support with those summer programs, and all of the RECKNED programming is in-person. So that is really an exciting development. We continue to look at before and after-school program staff, trustees. We were able to set up four interviews this week. I know that number sounds small in a large district of our size, but we are celebrating every candidate for before and after-school care, and we will continue to work on that with the goal of announcing, hopefully, at least one or two more schools before school is out. So that is our goal because we know our families need to plan and prepare for fall. Speaking of planning and preparing for fall, I hope that folks will set their calendars during the month of May. They're going to receive this email from the district that reminds them to go into InfoSnap and reserve their seat for fall. It really helps us to be sure that we have enough teachers and enough support staff if we get everyone through with their applications and to reserve their place for fall. We will update the COVID dashboard again this Friday. The public comment was accurate. We reported 288 cases last week, by far the largest week that we've had throughout the pandemic. My report from this morning, trustees, is another week of high cases. What we are seeing are clusters across our campuses. Those clusters are around some of the spring activities that folks are involved in, and we knew that that would be a risk. But we will continue with our masking and doing everything we can to mitigate our risk. It was so exciting to see yesterday the CDC, the FDA, I'm sorry, authorized COVID vaccination boosters for children age 5 through 11. So heads up, parents of younger children, just thinking about being sure to get that booster because we are seeing a pattern where the boosters are helpful in COVID transmission. Washtenaw County continues at a high level of transmission, and we just hope that everybody will continue to follow the guidelines that we all know by heart, keeping symptomatic students at home, using the testing. Trustees, as you're aware, we are both testing at school and sending home tests with families, hundreds of them, so that we can stay on top of these situations. Our goal is a strong finish. We really have one metric, and that is having our schools open for in-person learning each day, having enough staff, healthy and able to report to work. And we have been very close, trustees, over recent days with this current surge, but we have been able to maintain fully open schools, academic and enrichment, and athletic opportunities. I do want to share the guidelines for end-of-year ceremonies, and these will be communicated at every school. We are going to require for indoor activities that folks wear a properly-worn, well-fitted mask. Those events are ones that we look forward to, to celebrate our children and their success, and we want to keep our eye on the prize of everybody being able to gather together in person to celebrate our children. Folks have been asking questions, and we wanted to share this evening our summer program masking guidelines. So we have particular advantages during the summer that help us in decreasing the risk of COVID transmission, smaller learning groups, shorter amounts of time together, more outdoor opportunities. We even have the ability to open windows in many buildings. And so for these reasons, we will adapt the masking policy for the summer months. So that will begin on that first Monday following school dismissal, so on June 13th, and it will go all the way through the very last day of summer activities, which is the Friday before school starts on August 29th. And the guidelines are as follows. When Washtenaw County is in the CDC's high or red level of transmission, we will continue universal indoor masking as recommended by public health authorities. When Washtenaw County is at the CDC's medium-yellow or low-green levels, masking indoors will be optional. Our classrooms and schools will always be mask-friendly environments for everyone. We want everyone to feel comfortable and be able to maintain health and safety in our in-school activities. If you would like to check the Washtenaw County transmission level, that's easy to do on the CDC website. We're looking forward to a successful summer academic and enrichment programs across the schools, and we will continue throughout this time with the improved ventilation and with all of our other COVID measures throughout this summer of 2022. Keeping our schools fully open for in-school learning, enrichment activities, and spring celebrations while maintaining the safest in-school environment possible for our students and staff, this continues as our top priority. We are so focused on a strong finish to this 21-22 school year. Now, as we move through the summer, during August, we will evaluate the current COVID conditions at that time. None of us has a perfect crystal ball here now, but we will evaluate that, and we will share an update with the community during August as to the next steps with masking. We know that folks want to know, and we want to provide that information, but we want it to be accurate, so that'll occur in August. Tonight, just before this board meeting, I was delighted. Trustee Johnson and I were able to join a celebration of the video release of Voices From the Path, the debut show from the Actors Studio at Pathways. They are using the acronym ASAP, I think it's rather clever, Actors Studio at Pathways. The full video production will be released tomorrow, Thursday, May 19th. It also, there is a short in all of this featuring Ms. Anita, the long-serving cafeteria icon at Pathways. I want to give a special shout-out to York Food &amp; Drink for their kind support and sponsorship of this project, along with many other benefactors who helped support this project. They are Pathway's friends and neighbors just down Packard from Pathways. Congrats to our students and the Actors Studio at Pathways, to Director Quinn Strossel, Dean McCoo, and the entire Pathway School community on this exciting video production. Trustees, I didn't develop my thoughts yet, but I just want to give a shout-out to being able to join the climate summit this morning for a half a day out at Washtenaw Community College that was put on by the Wolfpack, a community organization of businesses and individuals who care deeply about the environment. It was wonderful to be there with other organizational leaders and really to talk about the future of sustainability in our community. So we'll share more about that over the coming days, but I just wanted to give that shout-out. The full video production will be released tomorrow, but we have permission this evening, trustees, this is just for you and those who are watching. We have permission to preview the video short featuring Ms. Anita, cafeteria phenomena and team member at Pathways. Thank you, trustees and members of the community, for all you do to support our students and staff, our families, and this Ann Arbor Public Schools community. And we'll finish the superintendent's update with this video.
Anyone that knows anything about Pathways knows that the most valuable member of our Pathways family is our cafeteria worker, Ms. Anita.
Ms. Anita, she's really nice, especially to the kids that are a little crazy. Like, men are a little crazy, they're a lot.
She's just like a caring person. And when you miss and you ain't eat, she'll let you come back.
Even if you come in late, you will always have food if you go in there and ask Ms. Anita.
I think she cares about the students.
You're welcome, baby.
And she goes out of her way to hand out waters if people need it. I think that's really cool.
Food is very important for kids because if you're hungry, for one thing, you can't concentrate. And then I try to do the best I can with the food that I have to make them want it. You know what I'm saying? And then they could come to me in between classes, before classes, after, even though I might say, well, lunch is over, breakfast is over, they still could get something to eat because I know how important it is for a kid to need something to eat.
I see her interacting with different kids and going out of her way to give kids extra food if she has it.
She's really nice. She's like probably the glue of the school. She's fun, she's nice, she's energetic.
Yeah, she's more than just a cook. She helps too.
I think she is a very helpful person towards the community of the school.
Well, I just, I guess when you really like something or care for it, it just all kind of falls in place. So I end up being more than just food service. I end up being, if you need somebody to talk to, you need somebody to cry to, and the kids would come to me.
She's also a friend, a mom.
More like a mother to you or like a parent.
She will stare on me about certain stuff, but it's like the mom.
I treat them just like I treat my two daughters. I have two daughters, and I treat them the exact same way. It's almost like coming to my second home. When I come here, it's almost like being at home. I've been here by myself all 23 years, so I like a clean kitchen, so I clean as I go. And the kitchen is spick and span when I leave, but it's no big deal because this is my space, and I represent this space. So I want it to always be clean, so I work on that. I work on making sure the tables is clean and the chairs is pushed in. I bought flowers and vases for each table to make it look homely.
Ms. Anita is such an important part of our family. We decided to travel to her home to meet her real-life family.
Okay, I want to introduce my family. That's my oldest daughter, Tangenika. That's my baby daughter, Ebony. She just got married two weeks ago. That's my oldest granddaughter, Tiara. This is my oldest grandson, Tavion. This is my next grandson, Devine, and this is baby, this daily.
She's big on just making sure she takes care of us and keeps us all together. I can remember one time, only one time in my life, me and my sister got into it, and we were talking for a couple of weeks, and she's like, oh, no, not my daughters, I'm not going for that. Not no kids of mine. I don't care who called who, but y'all better get this together because this ain't going on with my kids. Ever since then, we ain't never tried it again. She keeps us together.
Granny is someone who is a good time. Like, my granny, crazy, wild, cool. That's how I think of my granny.
She's like a very caring person. She's very kind.
Always bearing gifts. It could be the smallest thing. She's like, oh, I was at the store and I seen this, so I got it for you. It's like, okay, granny, thank you.
I had a blood clot in my lung. I was hospitalized for three weeks. I would FaceTime and stuff like that, but you really can't tell how a person is until you can see them. So when I went up to the hospital to see her, I seen how bad she was, and so I was like, well, you coming home with me so I can take care of you? And she stayed with me for three weeks. She waited on me hand and foot, on top of going to work. Waited on me hand and foot. I had three meals a day. She gave up her bedroom, her bed, everything for me, took care of me, excellent. So I thank God she's almost back to normal, and I'm so thankful for that. And that's kind of how I feel around here. My job never ends around here.
She's very nice and kind to everyone she's around, and she's very strong, positive influence in my life.
Oh, my God.
All of our lives, honestly.
Thank you, Ms. Anita.
For whatever the kids need me to do or whatever, I'm here to do it. No, I don't mind.
I would like to say thank you for showing that. That was very good. And we do have, and I appreciate Ms. Anita, I have had a chance to meet her. I think it was like my first maybe month on the board. I was able to go over there and visit, or maybe it was before I even got on the board, and she was very welcoming and kind, and I appreciated that. But we do have other employees like that across the district, and that is very important to have those employees who really care about the kids. And that's what makes us great as a district. I just wanted to accent the InfoSnap that you mentioned. Parents, please, I signed up my two kids for next year, and it comes from an email that is a non-reply, and it's through Power School. So when you see that, don't think it's junk mail, because I almost thought it was junk mail at first. And then I realized, oh, no, I got to go back in my trash and get that. So take a look at it, fill it out. It's very easy. They make it simple. You can do it on your phone, on your computer, but please get that in, and it's easier to do it now than when you're going to register your kids in the fall, and then you've got to go and then you've got to go into another room and try to find it, and you don't know your password and all that stuff. So please get that in.